Nobody else is just doing math in their free time? No?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Not today.
I mean, I tried once and it didn't really work.
Usually, Shannon, that's my go-to.
I'll just call you.
Carry the one.
My calculator doesn't for me. Actually, it's up almost exactly 11 percent. 11.01 percent.
Increase or...
Cells. So I'm on pace to be 11 percent cells for the year. 11 percent. Our sales tax collection is lower. But the cells itself, pardon me, our sales taxes is up as well, but not as much.
He's not listening, so. It is 1 o'clock, September, or October 5th for a regularly scheduled city commission meeting. Madam Clerk, do we have a quorum?
Yes, Mayor.
It is Commissioner Unruh's turn to do the Pledge of Allegiance and the invocation, so please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will you bow your heads?
Father, we come to this day, we are so grateful to be gathered here in Garden City. We ask you just to continue to give us wisdom and thank you for prospering our city. As we work together, Father, we are not only an example in western Kansas and southwest Kansas, but, Father, we're also an example to all of Kansas. Today, Father, we ask you to help us to make good decisions. Father, we are so grateful to serve this community. Today, we ask you move mildly and continue to send us the rain and the cooler weather. It's in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Next item is the approval of the minutes and the changes. I just had one minor little change. It was a spelling issue, but other than that, so. Any other items that the commission noticed? We'll make those changes with the updates approved. Public comment at this time in the meeting. We provide public comment. This is where we provide the public five minutes to address the commission on any items that are not on the agenda. Again, five minutes, and please come forward and state your name if you would like to address the commission. Yes, ma'am?
I'll go first.
Sure.
My name is Robin Calderon. I'm here to talk about fireworks.
Okay.
Again. Last time I was here, I'm going to go real briefly. I moved here in '89. Back then, we had a beautiful city display that everyone enjoyed, and it was safe. And they, they really, really stressed the danger in the large aerial fireworks. Now we are to the point where anyone and everyone can go by them anywhere in town and set them off wherever they want. They're no longer considered dangerous evidently. However, if you look at the National Pyrotechnics Association, they have strong recommendations about using these big aerial fireworks. And so my, what I would like to see happen in this town, I'm not saying ban them entirely, but I think people need to be, learn to be a little more safe with them. This past 4th of July, I was sitting on the living room couch, and the fire truck went screaming down our street with the sirens and lights on, and then went around the corner and stopped. So I went out in the backyard to see what was going on. Our dumpster was on fire. I had six fires in my backyard that I put out with the hose. The neighbors down the street, or down the alley, were setting off the big aerials, and evidently, they were doing something wrong, because they weren't going straight up in the air, they were coming right over my house and coming down in the yard and the dumpster. So, anyway, what I would like to see happen is, I think people setting those off should have to have a permit to do so. I had, I had to buy a permit to replace an existing fence in my backyard. So, you know, I mean, that's not going to harm anybody, but some suggestions, I did look into some of the regulations in other towns, other cities, and I think that these should be considered a public display. And as such, I think people should be licensed to have them, they should have to carry insurance, they should have to submit a plan to the city, a diagram of where they're going to be set off, and there needs to be a minimum, according to the Pyrotechnics Association, there needs to be a minimum of 150 feet from any existing buildings, trees, overhead lines, anything like that. And they need to have a plan in place for safety, for like fire trucks, ambulance, things like that. So, that's just some suggestions. So, anyway, I printed out a sheet with some ideas on it, I'll pass it around. I would really, really like to see something done as far as the safety issue of these. The noise issue is a whole nother thing entirely. Sleep deprivation during those two weeks is just unreal. Makes it really hard for anybody to do their job safely, so. But the main thing is the safety of them. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else for public comment?
Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to speak.
Okay.
But I feel like I'm going to go over there.
Okay.
Okay, I apologize for not getting this on the agenda, but I do want to, I wanted to bring the light, or tell you guys about Battle of the Badges Blood Drive. I don't know if you, any of you are familiar with that, but this last September, we held our 11th Battle of the Badge Blood Drive. This is a blood drive, American Red Cross comes in, and every donor that donates gets to pick their, or vote for their favorite first responder. We actually have representatives from each of those agencies here today, but it's Finney County EMS, Finney County Sheriff, Garden City Police Department, and Garden City Fire Department. We've went back and forth every year, we won't talk about who's won more. But this year, we actually exceeded our goal. Our goal on Thursday, September 9th, was actually 40, 40 units. We collected 47, and then our second day, our goal was 70, and we collected 78 units. So it's always a successful drive, and I just wanted to come here and let you guys know, give you an update. The Finney County Sheriff's Department did win again. Their person that is usually at the drives is not here, but usually it is Steve Martinez. So, he pretty much, it's him and I battling it out. We have police officers, firefighters, staff from EMS that come also and help to try and encourage votes, but just wanted to update you on that.
Sounds good. Would the, would the sheriff like to say anything about this? She said "yeah," okay. Well, thank you for, for that. Any other comments for the commission? On that note, we'll move to item number six then.
Item 6A, the governing body is asked to consider and approve to allow the mayor to proclaim the month of October 2021 as National Disability Employment Awareness Month in Garden City, Kansas.
Entertain a motion on this proclamation?
I move to approve the proclamation as presented.
There has been a motion, is there a second?
Second.
There's been a second, any discussion on this item? None being, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, nay. That item passed. I will read the proclamation, unless you want to speak first, I'll read, you'll speak after. Okay, I'll read the proclamation. The proclamation reads, whereas the month of October 2021 has been designated as National Disabilities Employment Awareness Month, to celebrate and recognize people with disabilities who make important contributions in their workplace. And whereas employment is vital to independence, empowerment, and quality of life of Americans with disabilities. And whereas the landmark Americans with Disabilities Act of 1990 removed barriers and enabled many individuals with disabilities to find more opportunities to use their gifts and talents in the workplace. And whereas the United States Congress, by joint resolution approved August 11th, 1945, has, has designated October as the month to recognize the contributions of Americans with disabilities and to encourage all citizens to help ensure their full inclusion in the workforce. And whereas the goals of the city properly give recognition to those who directly help people with disabilities gain full access to training and employment, opportunities to create productive and satisfying lives, and to live as independently as possible. Now therefore, I, Roy Cessna, Mayor of the City of Garden City, Kansas, do hereby proclaim the month of October 2021 as National Disabilities Employment Awareness Month in Garden City, Kansas, and call upon the citizens of Garden City to observe the month with appropriate programs and activities. Furthermore, I encourage the citizens of Garden City to seek information from those organizations, such as Mosaic, with expertise in matters concerning professionals who support individuals with intellectual and developmental disabilities. Signed and sealed the 5th day of October 2021, Roy Cessna, Mayor. And we do have some guests from Mosaic.
All right, well, thank you so much for getting the opportunity to come before you today. At Mosaic, we do believe in meaningful days, and being able to earn paycheck is meaningful to many of the people that we serve. We are thankful for a strong thriving business community to partner with and shed a light on National Disabilities Employment Awareness Month, because as we all know, each and every one of us has abilities to share with each other, and I would like to just take a moment to thank the businesses, businesses here in Garden City that are currently involved with Mosaic's supported community employment efforts. Dylan's East, Core Fitness, Russell Child Development Center, Pizza Hut Delivery, Great Western Dining, Traditions, Taco Bell, Arby's, and Papa John's. And today, I have Mary, and she's going to accept the proclamation, and she takes a lot of pride in her community job, and it just so happens that this is a special day because it's also her birthday.
Oh, congratulations.
Of course, she got to come. If you want to get your picture.
Sure.
All right, on three. One, two, three.
Just kidding.
Yeah, just kidding. Okay, on three again.
Yeah.
One, two, three. Perfect.
All right. Congratulations.
Mayor and Commissioners, item 6B, the governing body is asked to consider and approve the mayor proclaiming the week of October 3rd through 9th, 2021, as Public Power Week in Garden City, Kansas. Mike?
Go ahead.
Yes, good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. This is a proclamation that recognizes Public Power Week, so if you'd like to read that, Mayor, then whatever you want to do, and then I'll say a few things afterwards.
Okay.
Okay, thanks.
First, first we'll approve it.
Yeah, I move, yeah, I move that we approve proclaiming the week of October 3rd through the 9th, 2021, as Public Power Week in Garden City, Kansas.
There's been a motion, is there a second?
A second.
There's been a second, any discussion on that item? None being, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, nay. That item passed. I will read the proclamation. The proclamation reads, whereas the citizens of Garden City, Kansas, place high value on local control over community services, and therefore have chosen to operate a community-owned, non-for-profit, electric utility, and as customers and owners of our electric utility have a direct say in utility operations and policies. And whereas the Garden City Electric Department provides our homes, businesses, schools, and social service, and local government agencies with reliable, efficient, and cost-effective electricity employing sound business practices designed to ensure the best possible service at not-for-profit rates. And whereas, the city of Gardens, the Garden City Electric Department is a valuable community asset that contributes to the well-being of local citizens through energy efficiency, customer service, environmental protection, economic development, and safety awareness. And whereas, this Garden City Electric Department is a dependable and trustworthy institution whose local operation provides many customer protections and, or consumer protections, and continues to make our community a better place to live and work, and contributes to protecting the global environment. And whereas, the Garden City Electric Department will continue to work to bring low-cost, safe, reliable electricity to community homes and businesses, just as it has since 1914, the year when the utility was created, to serve all the citizens of Garden City. Now there, now therefore, I, Roy Cessna, Mayor of the City of Garden City, Kansas, to hereby proclaim the week of October 3rd through 9th, 2021, as Public Power Week. In the City of Garden City, Kansas, and recognize the Garden City Electric Department for its contributions to the community and to educate consumer owners, policymakers, and employees on the benefits of public power. Furthermore, I encourage our community to join hands with more than 2,000 other public power systems in the United States in this celebration of public power, which is best for consumers, business, the community, and the nation. Signed and sealed the 5th day of October 2021, Roy Cessna, Mayor.
All right, thank you, Mayor. It's a, it's a long resolution.
Yeah.
It's a good one. This year's Public Power, recognition of, of Public Power Week's a little bit different this week. This year, this year, they, they have produced videos, that's being shown, a different one every day for Public Power Week. The City of Garden City was fortunate, we represent the state of Kansas in those videos.
Wow, oh, good.
Congratulations.
Yeah, we're the second-largest municipal utility in Kansas, just second behind Kansas City Board of Public Utilities. There's a video that the city commission is in, there's a picture of you. Today, it's the customer service, service and finance department, so if you get a chance, check that out, it's a, pretty, it's pretty cool. The, the point of that is to show that even though the electric department keeps the lights on, it takes everybody behind it, from the city manager's office to the governing body, to make sure that this works successfully, so. Thank you very much.
Definitely. You want to get a picture, or are we good? Yeah, let's do a picture.
We like pictures. Just make me look taller.
Stand on a chair.
Okay, on three. One, two, three. All right, good.
All right. Congratulations. Thank you.
Item 6C, John Linder requests an opportunity to appeal a nuisance abatement mowing fine for the property generally located at 205 East Mary Street. Trent?
Good afternoon, Mayor, Commissioners. Coming before you as request from Mr. Linder to appeal his mowing. This is to do with the charges. The appeal came after the mowing was completed. On August 3rd is when our code enforcement officer visited the property and found it in violation. August 4th, the report was created, and August 5th is the date stamp of the letter. The completion date within that letter is for August 16th. Our mowing services showed up on August 18th and mowed the property. In the past 10 years, we've had about 10 cases of overgrown weeds, five of which have been appealed. When looking through the history, we just have notes, some are abated, some look like he complied, and some it looks like we might have, we may have mowed them. But we're going off of just notes from, from 2009 on. The alternatives, the governing body may approve the appeal, the governing body may not approve the appeal, staff is unable to recommend approval. The fiscal note is the appeal approved, if the appeal is, is approved, the city will waive the mowing fee of $900 within the packet, as well as what's submitted. You have his original letter. We do have some of the cases detailed out as far as the year, and Mr. Griselle's assessment or letter today, you guys may have, have a chance to read that as well. If you have any questions for me, I'll do my best answer.
Any questions from the commission?
Well, I do, so in the past was, so, I mean, I know that there's no record of, so was it in the past when he did take care of the, the mowing of it, was it done within the time period, or is this something that was, I mean, so is this like a one-off, or is this something that's always been right up to the time period?
So, in the past, where it showed it was abated, it looked like he had abated it, which means we had cited it being out of compliance with the tall grass ordinance. From there, we did not send our mower, so he came compliant before our mowing services went out to take care of the issue. On the appealed, all we show is that it was appealed, I believe, that was probably either A, the initial letter, I, we could not find anywhere where a cost was appealed, so it could have been the initial assessment of being compliant or not compliant. And that may have even happened administratively, going through some of the, since 2009 on, looks like previous director may have administratively appealed one or, or removed one of them, but...
So you said, how many times has this happened? That's what I wasn't sure.
10, 10 times in the past, 10 cases in the past 10 years.
For the same location?
Correct.
Any other questions? Do you have anything?
I might make a couple of comments.
Sure.
Mr. Linder seems to be relying upon the, the rules in Chapter 60 of the Kansas statutes related to adding three days on to a time limitation if, if an order or directive is mailed, because of the slow nature of mail. However, Chapter 60 time limitations are only set out to be directive for actions in the district courts of Kansas, and of course, this is not in the district court of Kansas, this is a, an action pursuant to city code. So I don't think that the position relying upon Chapter 60 time limitations is well-taken. Second matter I just want to bring to your attention, Chapter 38 of our city code, particularly the section dealing with weed nuisances, does not provide for an appeal, so I, the word "appeal" is used here in, in the agenda, but there's nothing that provides for an appeal once a nuisance is abated. Mr. Linder, as well as any other citizen, would have the right, within five days of issuance of the notice of the nuisance, to meet with the city manager and discuss whether or not more time was needed to abate the nuisance, or what steps were going to be taken. For whatever reason, that, that opportunity was not taken by Mr. Linder, and the nuisance was thereafter abated within the, or after the 10-day period of time set out in, in Chapter 38. The abatement could have taken place on the 16th, if I'm not mistaken, although 10 days would have been, actually ended on the, on the 15th, so 16th, the city could have mowed the weeds. It abated the nuisance on the 18th, which was the, the right of the city to do at that time. So, while the word "appeal" is being used, there is no formal process for an appeal. It's more in the form of a citizen coming for the governing body and asking for relief that otherwise is not granted by the code.
Okay.
Yeah, I do have a comment. So in, in Mr. Linder's letter, he, he indicates on August 8th, he contacted the, the man who was going to go ahead and take care of that, and then it, unfortunately, he had time at that time to, you actually made the, by the 14th to the 15th, but, because the 8th is early enough, but it sounds like he, this, he's, he's relying on information, like you said, with the three-day mailing time, three-day mailing time, which doesn't exist in our resolution. Is that what you're saying?
I'm saying that the, the three-day mail rule in Chapter 60 of the Kansas statutes doesn't apply to city code violation abatements.
And Troy, to follow up on that. I spoke to Mr. Linder when he called and expressed wanting to appeal or get relief. On the bottom of our letter, there is in bold, required compliance date of 8/16.
Okay.
Explained to him, if he felt that was going to be a challenge, because I think he, according to my conversation, was going to have his mower show up on the 18th. Regardless, we would have worked with him a few days if he had requested it. We had no communication requesting any further time needed to handle this violation, so...
So after he had indicated he had scheduled somebody to come, he didn't call you and say, "I'll have this done by this date?"
Correct, no.
Okay. Nope, I appreciate that.
Has it indicated on any of the other cases of, of the amount of time it had taken to mow that lot?
So, the notes on the other cases don't indicate on all of them whether or not we mowed them, or he had mowed them. I could do some checking to see if each one has dates. I just know that we did not go in all 10 cases and charge a fee to have our contractor mower do it. I just know that he was cited in violation, some of the appeals were done administratively. I, I don't know if the commission here or, or city manager is aware of any other specific conversations that might have taken place, but the notes just have appealed, abated, and there's some dates of the initial inspections. I could research further to find out if the abatement took, you know, nine days after the initial violation or not, but...
So I was getting at like the time of the mowing, because one of his concerns too was the amount of time it took to mow the lot? So, if we didn't do any of the abatement for that, then we wouldn't know the exact time it takes to mow that lot, is what I'm getting at.
Well, and we're not sending our own personal staff to mow it.
Exactly.
And so, when it's come back to us to abate someone's personal property, we're, we're in the hands of our, our contractor who's given that task to do it, without sitting there and really monitoring them full-time. I do know they took two days, I think it was five and a half hours one day, and maybe three and a half the second to get the property in compliance.
And the assumption there would be, and the question is that in each of the 10 years, the degree to which it was out of compliance would have been the same, right? I mean, it would, you'd say it would take a certain amount of time, which, yeah, if something's 13 inches tall or 18 inches tall, it probably doesn't make a difference if you've got sections of that property where you have stuff that's four foot high or four and a half foot high. That's probably not going to get knocked down with the same efficiency as a year where maybe everything that's out of compliance is 18 inches.
What, and was the, was the cost of the previous assessments, when you did get assessed, was it around the $900 also, or...
So I'm not aware of what the individual costs were on the other nine cases. Some of those, like I said, were appealed and abated, abated by him and/or abated by us. In his discussion with me, he claimed that sometimes they were less, which would probably speak to Matt's explanation of that. You know, taller the grass is, depends what kind of equipment he can actually get out there to abate the problem, whether you're using a large commercial zero turn, or you get a bush hog in there. I would say on the cost, I went through our fees that are able to be assessed, and by multiple violations, those amounts increase, and I explained this to him on the phone. The fine could have been upwards of $500 versus our fine or admin fee was 270. Contractor cost was 630, 270 was admin fee, which took it to the total of 900.
But there is no fine in this matter. The matter was not taken to municipal court.
Mike. Correct.
Any other questions? Entertain a motion on this item? I'll make the motion that we not approve the appeal as presented.
I'll second.
There's been a motion and a second, any other discussion on that item? None being, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, nay. That item passed. Thank you.
Under reported the city manager, all the items A through D, or presentation of monthly staff reports, if you have any questions on those, we'd be happy to try to answer them.
Well, I did want to make a couple of comments. On the abatements, I, it looks like we've had a record six months, and so that is really exciting to see our airport, especially in the airport report. And I did have a question on the police report, but I didn't know if there's anyone here that...
We do have somebody from the police department here, so...
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. You were hiding back there, sorry about that. Sorry. Sorry about that. So, you know, I know that auto theft is, is become a big issue, and I know, are there things that people can do? And I thought was really interesting, I stopped and talked with the officers, and they said, a lot of people still leave their cars unlocked, I mean, it's, this is a different city, or they leave things in their cars that can get stolen out. I didn't know if there's anything you could talk about, just some best practices, because I, I noticed that that, you know, that offense was pretty high, and the percentages of it happening more and more this year seemed really off the charts compared to other years. So I was wondering if you could kind of give us some ideas about what we might want to do with that?
I think you said it, it is on the rise, and I, I think locking cars, whether it's our car getting stolen, things getting stolen out of cars, and taking valuables out of the car at night, or if you're going to be parked in a parking lot or something like that, those are the main things. But locking, bits of our auto burglaries that we take, or auto theft, the cars left unlocked, or the keys are in, so, it's not much work for them to do, I think just open a door and go.
Yeah, yeah. It happened once in our, in our neighborhood, but, but they got stuff stolen out of the car, but the car was still there, so, yeah, but no, I appreciate that. Yeah, I didn't, I didn't realize that people would leave their cars unlocked, but, no, I appreciate that, thank you.
Any other questions on any of the items? I just noticed that the sales tax was... I just noticed that the sales tax was really good this month, so we keep growing, which is a good thing.
Yes, sir. It is. You'll see meetings of note, item eight, there's a long list there. Just want to, an item on there that affects everybody listening, well, maybe not, those that live inside the city limits, I guess, citywide cleanup's going on. We are, we, first day was yesterday, so on the map where there's a four indicated, that's where we were yesterday. I think that's where we will be today, too, and getting into, getting in a little bit to area five. But please get your stuff out to the curb if you'd like for the city to come by and take it from your property free of charge, and, and we'll get it to the landfill. That which somebody else doesn't get to first, we'll get to.
That's true.
I think we're ready for item nine A. It's the appropriation ordinance. If approved, it would be number twenty-five forty dash twenty twenty-one A.
I move that we approve appropriation ordinance number twenty-five forty dash twenty twenty-one A.
There's been a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
There's been a second. Any discussion on that item? None being, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That item passed. Item ten A.
Item ten A, the governing body is asked to consider and approve an ordinance rezoning from I-one Light Industrial District to C-two General Commercial District for the property generally located at six oh two East Fulton Street. If approved, it would be ordinance number twenty-nine fourteen dash twenty twenty-one. Trent?
Good afternoon again. So this is a rezone, this is essentially at Third and Fulton. This is a zoning request from Brian Lesmond. The owner of the property is K and B LLC. Brian is with us today, if you have any questions specific to him. So Third and Fulton, it used to be a roofing contractor's office. The back detached structure is a storage structure. The applicant, Brian, is requesting rezone this property, generally located at six oh two East Fulton, from I-one, which is Light Industrial District, to C-two General Commercial District. The applicant would like to open a retail gaming store. He's going to have some sales of actual product, as well as space to provide teenagers and adults and youth to go in there and play those games. There are two buildings, like I said, on the property. They're both separated from each other, and the other one is located one oh six North Third. Retail stores are currently not permitted in the Light Industrial District. The building at six oh two C, East Fulton has sat vacant for a short period of time. Changes this zone would allow them to go in. There are, with the storage in the back, that storage would still be permitted, so with the two structures, the rezoning classification would still work with both the structures. The governing body may approve the request according to the criteria in section twenty-seven point zero forty. Before we came here, we took the planning commission. Planning commission had their criteria to look at, which is A through I. The planning commission did recommend approval, seven to zero. The alternatives, the governing body may approve the rezone request, the governing body may not approve the rezone request. Staff, staff recommends alternative one. Like I said, Brian is here, if you have specific questions to do with his business or his request.
Any questions?
So have you gone through, I mean, I know like, it's gone through zoning and, but has everyone looked at? I mean, with my background, I just know that with landscape, because it looks like there's a lot of hard surface paving, does that need to come into play as far as when a new business comes in and they do a change like this? Do they got to meet those codes as far as, you know, adding or taking out concrete so that they can get landscape in there, so?
So I'll speak to that. One little note, too, and this is just information to the public. Brian has been very good about coming to the city. We've done a couple walkthroughs with him on different locations of other properties he was looking at. So he's been great about doing due diligence, find out what he would be able to do, what complications make you can. And if I may ask, Alicia had to come up and speak specifically to the landscape question. She could better answer that if it would take in on this.
For property like this.
Alicia, could you move to the mic, please? Thank you.
We wouldn't require them to add landscape, as they already have parking on the property, and it's not increasing the intensity. So if they needed more parking, then we'd probably want them to kind of bring that up into compliance. But since the majority of it is already concrete, they're just going in. For retail, that's not something we would make them do.
Okay, and there is enough parking for retail purposes on that?
Yes.
Okay. That's good. I mean, yeah, I just want to make sure that we're all kind of working together as far as getting the information to the owners and the buyers, and, you know, let's.
Yeah, typically, the only time we make them do landscape is if they were to demo everything on it, then we would want them to start new and, and meet those landscape requirements.
Sure.
Yeah, I'd appreciate hearing from Brian also. I mean, this is a chance to kind of plug your business, too, if it's wherever it lands.
Sure. What do you want to know?
So, yeah, well, this is totally new for me, so I, yeah, I've heard some people talk about it, but I have no idea.
Could you, could you just explain just a little bit what the business is about?
Sure, absolutely.
I know we've got it, the information or a packet, but just give us a quick overview.
Absolutely. So for context, I didn't come up with this idea on my own. There, the, the idea broadly is called a local game store, sometimes abbreviated LGS. There are about six thousand, estimates are about six thousand. They're all pretty much individually owned and operated. There are about six thousand nationwide. It's a little bit weird that we don't have one anywhere in southwest Kansas. The nearest, sort of, to triangulate it, Hayes has one, Great Bend has one, there's one down in Guyman, there's one in McPherson, there's really none to the west of here. So it's a pretty big radius that we would be covering, and that fits in well with Garden City's natural draw to the area. As to what it is, the general idea is usually between a quarter and a third of the area is retail space for board games, card games, miniature games, anything you can sit down at a table with other people and play. And then the other two thirds to three fourths of those, of an LGS is usually play space, which is, usually just looks like sort of standard card tables and chairs. Different games require different sized tables. And so there's, you know, there's quite a bit of space for that. Usually even like a fridge full of drinks and snacks and stuff like that, so people, you know, you want people to come down and stay for a while. The general demographic, usually looking at somewhere between fourteen to sixteen on the lower end, and up to, up to thirty-five or forty is usually, oh, I mean, you know, there's outliers in both directions, but I would say generally eighteen to thirty-five year old tends to be men, tends to even be, I would say, you know, there's a strong tie with colleges to this, where you'll find a lot of, of LGSs. Lawrence, I was just in Lawrence last weekend, and there are three, if not four, local game stores in Lawrence. There are three in Manhattan, a big one in Hayes. These tend to call, kind of congregate around college towns, and that's because, you know, it's, it's a big part of the target demographic for it, and so I think it explains a little bit why southwest Kansas doesn't have one. But there are, there are a lot of college graduates in the area, and I think, as the city commissioner, I'm sure you're aware, one of the hardest things to do is attract college graduates back to the area and to keep them here and keep them happy. And it's not going to appeal to everyone, but for a certain demographic of college graduates where this was something they did every weekend in college, for them to be able to have that here is going to be, I think, a really, actually important part of sort of quality of life. For not, again, not for everybody, it's a target, it's target demographic, but.
Well, it sounds like it was just waiting for you to come, so that's, yeah. So, well, I, I want to, I just want, thank you for the overview. I really appreciate it, but. So with that, I want to go ahead and I want a motion to approve ordinance number twenty-nine fourteen dash twenty twenty-one A, approving the rezoning of land from I-one Light Industrial District to C-two General Commercial District. Amending the zoning regulation and the zoning ordinance and zoning regulation, and the district zoning map, all to the code of ordinances of the city of Garden City, Kansas.
There's been a motion to approve ordinance twenty-nine fourteen dash twenty twenty-one. Is there a second?
I'll second.
There's a second. Any other discussion on this item? None being, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That item passed. Thank you very much. Good luck.
Good luck.
Item ten B, the governing body is asked to consider and approve an ordinance amending the comprehensive plan and rezoning from R-one Single Family Residential District to CO Office to Service Business District for the property generally located at seven fourteen Ballenger Street. Alicia?
Mayor and commissioners, the applicant, Jamie Warren, on behalf of Compass via Real Health is requesting a comprehensive plan amendment and rezoning request from R-one Single Family District to CO Office and Service Business District for seven fourteen Ballenger. If you recall, this was the old Russell Child Development Center. It sat vacant since 2018. The applicants would like to use part of the building as an expansion for their offices, and then on the other side, use it for emergency shelter. So the comprehensive plan, future land use, shows us as single family, multi-mix. Rezoning it to CO Office and Service Business District is not consistent with our comprehensive plan. However, staff has reviewed the CO and feel that the purpose intent, which is to provide a district for those institutional and commercial uses that require separate buildings or building group land, space, and aesthetic requirements of this district are intended to be compatible with adjoining residential districts. This district should not be established in a strip zoning fashion along major streets, but should concentrate to provide convenience and accessibility to the public. So we, as staff, feel that CO would be the most appropriate zoning district for this, and so this building doesn't sit, sit vacant anymore. Your alternatives are, there are two different alternatives, and the first one being for the comprehensive plan amendment is to, the governing body may approve the comprehensive plan amendment, or two, the governing body may not approve the comprehensive plan amendment. And for the rezoning request, the governing body may approve the rezoning request, or the governing body may not approve the rezoning request. Staff would recommend approval of both the comprehensive plan amendment and the rezoning request. And Scott is here from Russell Child Development, and I believe someone from Compass, too, if you guys have further questions.
Any questions? Entertain a motion on this item.
Is this, is this going to be one or two?
It would be twenty-nine fifteen dash twenty twenty-one.
I guess it's one. Together. One motion.
All right, why move?
Or?
There's two items on this? So the, the, the comprehensive plan amendment, we need to take that first, then? Is that it? Right? Yes? Entertain a motion on the comprehensive plan amendment, then?
Well, I move to approve the comprehensive plan amendment.
There's been a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
There's been a second. Any other discussion on that item? None being, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That item passed. Now the resolution, or the ordinance number twenty-nine fifteen dash twenty twenty-one.
Well, I move to approve ordinance twenty-nine fifteen dash twenty twenty-one.
There's been a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
There's been a second. Any discussion on that item? None being, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That item passed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item twelve A, Lana DeValle, president and CEO of Finney County Economic Development Corporation, will provide a quarterly update to the governing body. Lana?
Good afternoon, mayor and commissioners.
Good afternoon.
And C. Lynn sent out the quarterly report in your packet, so you've had an opportunity to look through that, and I welcome any questions you have about anything that you read in there. And probably biggest things that are happening, we can now announce that project seven dash twenty, meaning we started it in July of 2020, can now be named as Garden City Co-op. It took us a while. We have multiple sites for them to look at. They eventually settled on a site that is actually within the city of Holcomb, a large site. I don't know if you guys are familiar with KJK formerly owned it. So very nice piece of property with excellent rail service, which was very important to them. So VNSF has been a great partner, once again, in helping them with design of that, and we're working through the remaining prospects as far as the county road that will access it and those types of things. So happy to answer any questions that might arise on that, but the Garden City Co-op has announced it to their membership and, and so forth, so it's okay for us to call it what it is now. And empirical is well underway. If you guys haven't been out there, you need to go out there, because every day it seems like there's a little bit more, and it's pretty exciting to watch. And I did, I did ask the county commissioner yesterday to bear in mind that there are about three hundred additional people in our community right now working out there, and they aren't as familiar with our traveling patterns, so just be mindful. When we mix that in with, you know, as they said on the K dot call multiple times this morning, mix that in with the windmills that Garden City puts on the highway.
It's a busy place out there.
It is a busy place, but that's, we love it. It's awesome. So good things happening there. Quinby on the west side, we are working on a wastewater solution. The county contracted with us, asked FCEDC to manage that process, so we have contracted with PEC out of Wichita. As you know, they're very familiar with the city of Garden City's wastewater, and we felt like they made sense to look at, at alternatives for us in that, that envelope, if you will, between Garden City and Holcomb. That would open up significant additional development property for us. We've, we've got opportunities for significant residential, as well as some pretty large industrial projects. So we're really looking forward to that, and we start that process this Friday, actually. Garden City Plaza, things are moving forward there, and we have connected, there's a new buyer for the Sears Building, a developer that, that we've been working with, and they are working with the owners of the J.C. Penney side of the Garden City Plaza, really just trying to help them coordinate, so that we don't end up with two very different looking facilities, as they look at doing upgrades and renovations. So hopefully that works. If not, as long as they're both upgraded and full, we probably don't care. So Rochester, Project Rochester, that is the First National Bank project on the hill from Target down to the Quick Shop. And we had been approached several years ago by some of the veterans groups, that they were very disappointed that we didn't have a veterans memorial in town. Quite frankly, I had never really thought of it that way. So we, at that time, started looking for opportunities, and this was one of the first projects that came to us after we had those discussions with them. And so when we first started talking with First National Bank, we said, what if you set aside some space for a memorial? And they were really excited to do that. So it's been very, very fun working with them. We do have a committee made up of primarily city staff, who's working with us on helping to come up with a design. The veterans groups all asked that we provide them with a list of, and some pictures of some different types of memorials, that they would rather vote on something than try to pick something themselves. So we're happy to help them with that, so that process is ongoing. And then probably the, the last big thing that's important, Shannon actually went with me yesterday morning when we presented to the county and gave them kind of an update on some of the data that we've been compiling in our office, and I'm sure you guys are aware of a lot of that, but probably the most important thing to mention, COVID. There really hasn't been a lot of local information about how we're doing with COVID as a community, but we would tell you that, that while it still exists, you know, things, things are looking up, certainly for our community. I have had several businesses who came to us after the president made the announcement that he was going to require all employers of a hundred or more to either vaccinate or create a weekly testing option. There was a lot of concern among our employers that that was going to really create huge issues for them. Our advice to them has been, stay calm. Let's see what happens first, you know? But I will say that, you know, right now, Finney County, as of yesterday, Finney County has the, is, is the highest percentage of Kansas counties for eligible population with their first dose of vaccine. So I think we can obviously attribute a large part of that to major employers who are requiring the vaccine. But I also just did some research this morning, and of all of the larger corporations across the country that have put in a mandate ahead of the president's mandate potentially coming into effect, ninety-nine percent of the employers, of the employees have complied. So while you may hear that, oh my gosh, ten thousand people are going to leave employment there, you know, for that company because they won't get vaccinated, that's literally one percent of their entire workforce. So I think it's important to keep it in perspective. And again, we don't want our employers panicking. We'll, we'll find solutions as we have to, and we understand it's a tight labor market. We absolutely understand that, but, but we're here to help, too, and if, and if employers want some assistance with how to work through that, or how to talk through that, we're happy to point them in the direction to get them some resources. Anything I can answer for you?
Any questions?
Yeah, I do. I know that we have a contract with someone, and I'd, I'd never remember their name, but they helped fill up, fill some of the empty office or office space buildings or empty storefronts.
Retail.
Retail. And I'm, so I'm curious about how that's going, and then is it, is it a contract that's for, is it an annual contract, or is it something that will be coming up again?
It is an annual contract, and we, it will come up again in December. We don't have the funding currently earmarked to be able to continue that contract. We, we've had a good experience with them. Of course, we contracted with them right before COVID.
Yeah, right.
So there's obviously been quite a few shifts in brick and mortar retail, but, you know, it was our relationship with them that, that allowed us to connect the Sears Building with a new, very high test developer to get that, that property filled. So, we did limit their scope to working within the bypass, and we felt it was important that we not, you know, we, we can always go get new construction and the greenfield type stuff, but it was really our intent to focus on the stuff inside the bypass that, and the older building stock, if you will. Honestly, at this point, we, we've been kind of on a run of restaurants for some reason. It's like, who's been contacting us nonstop? And we're just out of buildings. I mean, we just really don't have, you know, we get calls all the time for, oh yeah, we're looking for the second generation stock. We don't have that, we don't have first generation, we don't have second, we don't have any, any empty buildings right now. So, I don't know, you know, unless we were to change our, our focus and opt to really utilize them as far as new retail development, I'm, I'm not sure that, that there would be much benefit to continuing a contract with them, just because we, again, don't have a lot of empty real estate to fill at this point.
No, that's good. Yeah, I, I wondered, I mean, I, I know that they had been successful in doing several really great things.
Yeah, they've been great to work with. They have, and they've, they've certainly connected us with some relationships that we wouldn't have been able, especially with COVID. We wouldn't have been able to travel and, and get ourselves in front of those phones in the past, so.
No, thank you.
Yeah. Anything else?
Any other questions? Thank you very much. Good job. Keep up the good work.
We will. Thanks.
Thank you.
Item twelve B, the governing body is asked to consider and approve a memorandum of understanding between Garden City Fire Department and Finney County Emergency Medical And John?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners.
Good afternoon.
Yeah. The backstory is, I was contacted by Kenny with the Finney County EMS, where he advised that there's a high call volume and a staff shortage, and requested that we, if we could help them under Code Blues and assist them on their second out. EMS is gonna provide all the, and maintain the EMS bags that are on the fire trucks. And then, at first, EMS will offer, you know, EMR class, and then transition into an EMT class to get all the firefighters up to speed on EMT. So, this is something we already do, we just request on the MOU to put the firefighters under medical direction, which would go under Finney County EMS.
Okay.
Any questions?
You gotta watch them count the people, yes, so that you're not, I'm just kidding. I am just kidding.
Entertain a motion on this item?
I move to approve the memorandum of understanding between Garden City Fire Department and Finney County Emergency Medical Services.
There's been a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
There's been a second. Any discussion on this item?
John, I do have a question. Was this taken up yesterday by the county commissioners?
Yes.
Yeah.
All right. Great. Thanks.
Any other discussion? None being, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That item passed. Thanks, John.
Thanks, John.
Item twelve C, the governing body is asked to consider and approve an amendment to the current LEC, or Law Enforcement Center, agreement and grant approval for remodeling city-designated spaces within the LEC after the relocation of the municipal court and And Captain, are you presenting this, or am I doing it? I don't wanna surprise you. Okay, no. That's good.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. Come forward, request the, amend the law enforcement occupancy agreement that we have between the city and the county. This came before you last year, when they just, we decided to move the municipal court out to the Telegram Building. We, the city wanted to keep that space for the use, was admitted that whatever space is the city's, is the city's, county's, is the county's. Since that time, District Court has decided to move out of the District Court Room in the basement of the Law Enforcement Center, and with that space opening up, it allowed for some opportunities to maybe exchange some spaces that work better for the Police Department and for the Sheriff's Office. And so, we've worked with them to even out space where we would take over District Court, they would take over what we have now as our Officer Squad Room and our Evidence Room, and then there's some other offices downstairs and upstairs that would be switching spaces between the city and the county. All told, it equals about a hundred and fifty square feet difference from what it was before in the county's advantage. With that, also, the request is to allow us to accept bids to start work on the property or the space that we currently have that we want to, to make different use of. This did go before the county yesterday, and they did approve.
Any questions for the captain? Entertain a motion on this item?
I move to approve the revised Law Enforcement Center agreement and remodeling city-designate spaces with the, within the LEC.
There's been a motion. Is there a second?
A second.
There's been a second. Any discussion on this item? None being, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That item passed. Thanks, Captain.
Thank you.
Item twelve D, the governing body is asked to consider and approve purchasing three small tracts of real property from Triple J and D Company LLC in the amount of twenty-five hundred dollars. Mike?
Good afternoon again, Mayor and Commissioners. I found it. We've come to you this afternoon to ask for consideration to purchase these three small tracts of land for twenty-five hundred dollars. The cities were in the process of, excuse me, of obtaining easements for an alleyway to be constructed across twenty-one fifty-one, twenty-one sixty-one, and twenty-three oh one Labrador Boulevard. The easement extends that we want to purchase will go east and west. It will connect, I can get the pointer out in a minute and show you how that'll connect to that existing alley that runs north and south. The area is currently being developed, a lot at twenty-six oh two Cherokee, is there's a, there's a business plan to be built in there, and we've worked with that developer to figure out how we're gonna pick up the trash service, the solid waste service, so we wanna extend that alley up and around, so we can provide that service, and so the solid waste trucks won't have to back out on the Marion Street. So, while obtaining these easements, the property owner of twenty-one sixty-one Labrador Boulevard, Triple J and J D Company LLC, they own three small tracts of land, and it's valued at fifteen thousand five hundred and twenty dollars. They've offered to sell into the city for twenty-five hundred dollars, as they are not marketable, and they're not large enough to construct anything on. The larger track is basically the drainage easement that's highlighted in blue on the map there, that has a sidewalk extending through it that gets over to the high school. And then, the two tiny parcels are on the corner of North Woodbridge, Woodland Road, and Labrador Boulevard. Why those two little tracts were separated, no one knows, but they're there. The one is, has been completed in concrete, and in my memo, I said they both had been, but one has not. It will be as part of this process if it moves forward. If the governing body approves the purchase this, and the easements are obtained from the other two lots, and the Streets Department will commence with building the alleyway that's necessary. There were some questions on, because that's a kind of a drainage area, if we would just fill that in, and the answer is we'll put a culvert in there, and then we'll build the alley over the top of that, so that the trucks are not driving through that drainage area. We will have to take over the maintenance of that property, should you choose to allow us to purchase that. It's small, but nevertheless, it's still something else we're gonna have to mow and maintain. So, with that, I'm willing to answer any questions. You may have, your alternative would be to authorize staff to purchase the three tracts for twenty-five hundred dollars, or do not authorize the purchase. If you agree to purchase this, then it would be funded under the Solid Waste GL Code Number seventy-five fifty-one five eleven sixty thirty land purchase.
Any questions? Entertain a motion on this item?
Move to authorize the staff to purchase the three tracts for twenty-five hundred dollars.
There's been a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
There's been a second. Any discussion on that item? None being, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That item passed.
Item twelve E, the governing body is asked to consider and approve a purchase of real property located, located at one forty-five Harvest Street for five hundred fifty thousand dollars.
Yes, Mayor and Commissioners, this property, as the city manager stated, is located at one forty-five Harvest Street. It's approximately one point two three acres and has two buildings on it. One building is two thousand five hundred and square, two thousand five hundred and twenty square feet. The other building is forty-eight hundred square feet. Both buildings are currently occupied by the owner, and they've been kept in excellent condition. The value pricing that was done on this property, the high was, the, the value was five hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and the price per square foot ranges anywhere in their value pricing, between sixty-four dollars and eighty-nine cents a square foot to seventy-five dollars and fourteen cents a square foot. This is comparable to other prices, other properties in the area that have been recently sold, and they vary in price from a low of thirty-nine fifteen per square foot to a high of a hundred and six, sixty-eight per square foot. The property and the buildings are located directly across the street from the Utility Service Center, and should the governing body approve the purchase of the property, then the smaller building would be utilized to house the Traffic Department, which is currently operates out of a very small space in the solid waste recycling building, which is located at one twenty-five J C Street. And then, the larger building would be utilized by the Street Department for the time being. This purchase, should you choose to move forward, could also reduce the amount of new structures, new buildings that would be required to be built in the proposed combined Public Works complex located east of the Utility Service Center. Alternatives would be to authorize the purchase of this real property located at one forty-five Harvest Street for five hundred and fifty thousand dollars, or do not authorize the purchase. Staff recommends Alternative One. On a fiscal note, Bond Counsel, Mary Carson, she's preparing a resolution that we presented to the governing body on October nineteenth, and that will cover how these idle funds will be used for this purchase, and then repaid from the general funds, Street Department budget in the years to come. So, the idle funds are just funds that's currently in there and is not being utilized at this present time. I'm happy to ask for any questions.
Yeah, can you, can you explain that just a little bit? So, the idle funds are already, now, where are these idle funds, where are they located at? Within the Street Department's budget, or?
They're within the, the combined general budget of the city.
Okay, that's, all right. I see what you're saying.
And rather than trying to say we're gonna take twenty thousand here, fifty thousand here, we're gonna use them all, and then this resolution will clear up that that has to be paid back.
Paid back by the street, yeah. Okay. That was my only question.
Entertain a motion on this item?
I move to authorize the purchase of the real property located at one forty-five Harvest Street for five hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
There's been a motion. Is there a second?
A second.
There's been a second. Any other discussion on this item? None being, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That item passed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Item twelve F, the governing body is asked to consider and approve the Grimsley Tennis and Pickleball Court lighting project bid. Aaron?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. So, we did a invitation to bid to redo the lighting up at Grimsley Tennis and Pickleball Courts. Haven't been up there in a while. Well, they're the same lights that were there twenty, thirty, forty years ago.
Some of us are that old, so.
Yeah, so, they've, they've outlived their lifespan. It's time for them to be replaced. And part of what's exciting about this with the new LED technology, I think we're actually gonna make the neighborhood a lot happier if you choose to approve this bid. We did receive three bids. One of them was not qualified, had very little information as far as, and didn't have the, the requirements for the bonds and those things. So, the next lowest was Wallace Electric at a hundred and ninety-nine two fifty. They are purchasing their equipment from Musco, which is a very reputable sports lighting firm. Fourteen weeks to complete if approved, once they start construction. And, I don't know, do you have any questions about the lighting? It is budgeted?
No, I do, I do appreciate that we had a local bidder who was able, and I mean, the difference in the two bids, I was really surprised about, but I do appreciate when local, especially local organization and businesses really not only see the value, but also can come in at the lowest bid and really do a great job, so.
Yeah, I, I would note that the city electric department will be doing some work that will also be paid for, which is about another twenty, give or take twenty-two thousand dollars to move some power lines underground and put in a transformer used to run the new lighting system. So, that is in addition to that one ninety-nine two.
So, when you say the neighborhood will be much happier, I'm curious about, is it because of the quality of lighting?
Yeah, light bleed. LEDs are very directionally oriented, and there's a lot less what they call light bleed, meaning, right now, you could probably sit on your porch and read a book with the current lights. The bleed off those lights becomes much smaller to where hopefully it won't, it won't even get to the edge of the street, much less across the street, if that makes sense. So, if the commissioners are curious, I can, I can probably find some photo images of what it looks like between the old halogen lights and new LED systems.
That's fine.
And you talked about these, sorry, you talked about these being the old halogen lights, right, that are there now? So, when you.
There are, there are some, well, they did a metal highlight bulbs that are the old school, like if you kickoff, you gotta wait ten minutes, and that'll kick back on. They still take five minutes or more, ten minutes to warm up, which is a big deal in the tennis and pickleball courts, because if you're not paying attention, you let the timer go out, you're twenty minutes before you're really playing again.
Right. They do last longer when it's cooler, when it was hot out, they were going out all the time.
They're a little faster when it's colder.
Yeah, yeah.
But the idea is LEDs are basically, I mean, as good as a light switch on and off, and a lot less power consumed.
It is the white, the white light, yeah, and I, I was in Manhattan, and they had purple lights. They were kinda cool, but once you get out underneath them, it was like blinding.
Wow.
I mean, if you let me put, I'm.
I like, they, they look cool, yeah.
Well, I do appreciate that you found the dollars already, I mean, that we have money in the fund to pay for this, and so that's, but that I'd like to move that we approve the bid from Wallace Electric.
There's been a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
There's been a second. Any other discussion on this item? None being, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That item passed. Thank you.
Thanks, Aaron. Item twelve G is the consent agenda. If approved, it would be items G one through three.
I move that we approve the consent agenda, items G one through G three.
There's been a motion. Is there a second?
A second.
There's been a second. Any other discussion on this item? None being, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That item passed.
We're ready for Commissioner reports.
Commissioner Enruh.
Man, it takes, seems like it takes forever to get to go first, but, well, I really appreciate, I just, I wanted to say also in the consent agenda that there was the federal and the state legislative agenda items, and just from a couple of weeks ago in our discussion, I think they turned out really, really well done, and they took a lot of the suggestions. I think they, they really read really well, and so I just wanna say thank you for whoever did that. I know it's Stuart and Jennifer, and so I really appreciate the work on that. I also wanted to highlight a couple of things that are coming up. The multicultural, multicultural diversity breakfast, a personal friend of mine, Fernando Alvarez, who's also a pastor at Turning Point Church of the Nazarene for the Spanish church, Punto de Decision, he is coming to speak. He is from Guatemala originally, and actually, they have a ministry down there in Guatemala, but he has a fascinating story. He is now a counselor. He came to the United States basically with nothing, and has really worked his way up and is a counselor at the high school, but he is, he and his wife, they have four kids, and just an incredible young couple with a young family. But if you get a chance to hear his story, just make sure you, you, that will, it'll be really worth your time at the multicultural diversity breakfast. I also just, also wanna highlight, oh, this past weekend was the Leave a Legacy Run. Me and eight hundred and eighty or more of my closest, now my closest friends, went, Me and 880 or more of my closest, now my closest friends went, and I just want to give a shout out to the 55 and older group, because we are growing as there, there are more of us. But it really was really well run. And the thing I really wanted to highlight was, you know, I saw the fire department out there and the police department out there, and I'm, I'm going to tell you, this run went off without a hitch. It is probably one of the best runs in Kansas. I've been to other ones, Back East, and this one rivals it. And so it just was really well done. And I, and I think that what the work that they do is really, really important. And so I'm, I'm really excited about that opportunity to be a part and just to be around everyone who really cares about not only the love of running and outdoor activity, but also just, you know, helping people who are with the challenge of cancer and those kind of things. There's lots of, there's lots of really great things going on. There's been a couple of events that have been really well done downtown here just recently. I'm excited about a lot of the park improvements that we're going to be making. And so when I saw the lights at Grimsley, I was really excited about that because I, I do love pickleball. I'm not great at it, but I, at least I can beat my kids, that's all I can say right now. But I really do appreciate all the work that we as a city are really, I'm investing into our outdoor or outdoor recreation and really building places for our community to really happen. So with that, that's all I have.
Thank you. Commissioner Ortiz.
Yeah, I don't have much, but I do agree with Commissioner Enroe. This has been a really busy month and a busy week, and there's been a lot of great things that have been happening. So it's good to see people out there and engaging and participating in some of these events and also seeing our first responders out there as well. So thanks for all their hard work, along with, you know, what's going on this month with the, I forgot what it was called, the Disabilities Employment Awareness Month, sorry. Happy birthday, Mary. That was pretty awesome to happen on her birthday, right? Yeah, and there's also 4H that's been going on. And I've heard at the county commission that they announced this week to be 4H week. So a lot of great activities that those kids get to participate in in 4H. So a lot of, there was a couple of attendants there from 4H that gave a little speech. It was, it was good to hear those kids get up and encourage them to, to speak and say what, what's, what they really love about 4H. So also, other things happening this weekend actually is the, the football, high school football game with the hatchet game. So I know a lot of people, they got confused with this last weekend being the hatchet game, but that was because of soccer. Soccer was playing Garden City versus Dodge City. So it was like, no, the hatchet football game's this weekend. It's this coming weekend, this Friday, so hopefully everybody goes out to support that. Those kids, you know, they, they love that atmosphere of the parents being out there and family watching them and supporting them. So for this year, it's important, last year was, you know, we didn't get to have that. So this year is, is really kicked off to be a great year and for these seniors this year. My son's a senior, so he's in cross country, so he's been running. But those, it's hard to be in sports for those kids, so supporting them through their sports activities and their, and keeping up with their grades is really important. So just go out and support them and be there for them. Also, the comprehensive plan is out and they will be, they'll be at a lot of these events. So be looking for surveys. If you want, if you really want something to have, or if you want to see something that you want happen in Garden City, fill out these surveys. They're very important for you to just think of an idea. I know that there's a lot of ideas popping up at, at the river for some courses and so, you know, just some different, it's, it's amazing how this is kind of coming to existence and, and getting ideas from the public and, and it's amazing because it's like, wow, I didn't, you know, a zip line down the river, that'd be cool. So it's great to just see these ideas. Skate park's going to come about in fruition here soon, so we'll get to see that. But yeah, engage yourself, take the surveys, and just, that's just a way to actually share your idea with everyone here in Garden City. And those are, those are great ideas. Those are things that, brainstorming is what truly, that's where it starts. And so get it on paper, get it in front of people, and then we vote on it to see if we can make something happen, so.
Thank you. Commissioner Euler.
Yeah, just to kind of piggyback off what Commissioner Ortiz said, which is exactly that, getting involved in your community. I know right now on the city's social media pages, talking about all the RFPs, but then also just all of the different positions that are open, all of the different activities going on, just ways that you can get involved in your community. You know, it's, it's easy to sit up here and make decisions, but it's hard to make them in a bubble if we don't know what's going on. And so it's really important for people to come and let us know what they want to see moving forward. Also, the city cleanup is, I haven't noticed as much stuff out this time as I did the last time, but it does. So I just, I'm just so grateful that the city does that. I think it's just one of those, one of those key features of living here, to be able to have that. And I'm also excited about the partnership or the MOU between the firefighters and EMS. I think that's just another, you know, great way to kind of help enhance skills and, and provide that quality of service to people here in Garden City. So that's all I have.
Commissioner Dick.
All right, well, the mayor touched on a little bit. Sales numbers come in, getting really high. I think Melinda hit, said that we are up about eight, on track to be about 8% up for sales tax collection, but 11% on sales overall. I remember you just have some difference in distribution, stuff like that, but when we're talking about an 11% increase in sales, those are the kind of numbers that, when you have like one of those new towns in Colorado that are just along the front range and all of a sudden, oh, we made this new town, it's still Denver, but it's a new town. Those are the kind of increases where you see 11%. It's, I don't even know what you would categorize an existing town in the middle of nowhere that is able to generate 11% over a record-setting year that we had last year. So doing really well there. Thanks for Rochelle and Jared for the, for all the stuff at the Garden City Airport, the pre-meeting and all that stuff. And I mean, even though there's a high number of issues to resolve, it's all paint stuff and it all seems like it might be having to do with a little bit of nitpicking on the, on the regulator's side. But anyway, it's good to see that we have overall still very good air service in our community. Wanted to say just, just thanks to Mosaic and all they do. If you ever have a chance to talk with them and their clients about what they're actually doing, not just, just seeing them for a little bit, what these jobs that Dylan's gives them or Taco Bell gives their clients and how important that is to their livelihood, please take a listen to what they do. It's a really good organization and they really do care about some of the people that need extra care in our community. Okay, more. I had a chance to go down to the Apple Hutch down in Plains and then ate a very good lunch at Mama Fina's down in Plains, Kansas, very good tacos. And I encourage everybody to pay attention to what's going on locally in, in Garden City, but also pay attention to those things that are happening, like Wimmy Diddle was last weekend, I believe, up in Scott City. When we're talking about seven or 11% increase in sales, most of that, a lot of that is people coming into Garden City. Keep in mind that part of, part of this is, is us as a city going out and, and doing all the things that are in our, in our 100-mile area that we go to. So go check out the pumpkin patches. I know Spiritville has one. I know one down in Satana, I believe, down in Haskell County has a good one. There, there's just a lot of opportunities and you might find some really good restaurants too, like Mama Fina's. And then finally, we had a meeting with Kate out this morning and this process will continue to go on with the Kate, with the Ike listening tour. I encourage anybody who feels that we need divided highways to make sure you let Kate know. And if you think that passing lanes are sufficient, let them know. But if you think it's divided highways as a solution, please make sure you use that